October the eighth, twenty twenty five, I say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the liberty of our citizens, one nation under God. And to the safekeeping of the citizens of this country.
Okay, are we able to approve the agenda?
I have no changes.
Mister Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Alright, President of the Council of Coats has made a motion to approve the agenda and Counselor Renard has seconded that motion. Any debate, any concerns, any comments?
None.
None. Alright, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next portion of the meeting will be the approval of, I'm sorry, the consent agenda. Uh, it's the August twenty twenty five minutes. Repair the aerial truck for the fire department. Uh, we have a claim ordinance, A zero one zero eight two five. And the designation of Councilmember Daniel Moon is a voting delegate at the Kansas League of Municipalities Annual Conference on October the eleventh.
We have to do the fire truck or can we just?
Just approve.
Okay, I I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
The only reason was the fire trucks was about ten thousand dollars and had to get fixed over.
Yeah.
We should all for the most part.
Alright, Councilmember Renard has made a motion to approve the consent agenda and Counsel, uh, Counselor Hanson has seconded that. Any concerns? Alright, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alright, motion carries. Uh, next session, public comments. We've got two people who would like to speak. Um, they each get five minutes, um, for per subject and Karen, you'd like to come up first?
I just wish to, um, as I did previously, defer my comments to the agenda item relating to the IR building lease. So I can be a part of that discussion.
Oh, the, uh, North Douglas building?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Hmm, that that's acceptable.
Sound good? Yeah, okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, Mister Ingles.
Hello. Hello, uh, I would just like to let the council know I was approved by the Earl'swood County Board, uh, to be the Earl'swood, uh, representative. So, uh, we had our first meeting on the twenty seventh. Uh, learned a lot, Kevin is a great person, uh, we have some good things going, so I'll just keep the board updated, that's it.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Brian.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, that's it for public comments, um, moving on to unfinished business. The filling of the vacant city council position and we have one application.
It's Mister Mayor, we have Mister Allen applied again, uh, of course, he applied last time. But you can appoint him, you can appoint somebody else, you can afford the appointment, the position open because it's, you know, you basically listed four months left in the, in the term, so those are all your options and.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to appoint him, if that would be okay. My justifications are we're gonna hire a police chief, I think his background is outstanding for that, that insight would be valuable. Um, super talented guy and it was, it was tough to choose between, um, Councilmember Moon and Mister Allen again, so I'm glad he's got an opportunity. I think it allows the team to see how it works, should Jessica win the mayor's, uh, position? That's her seat, her two years becomes available, it would make perfect sense that we would just.
Yeah, don't confuse the two issues.
I'm not, I'm not, but I'm saying if the team works, right? But if the team works well, I would think it's common sense, she would make the appointment then, that's a separate issue, I know.
Yeah, they'll be up to the council that time.
That's correct, but.
Yeah.
Get some team building going on and I think it just makes perfect sense, so I'd like to make that appointment. State of the council.
Mister Mayor, I will, uh, move to approve your appointment of Mister, Russell Allen.
Would I second that?
You could.
Uh, Mister Mayor, I move to second.
Who said I seconded?
I second.
Okay, so Counselor Renard has made a motion and Counselor Moon has seconded that motion to appoint Russell Allen for the remainder of the, the Counselor, or former Counselor Johnson's four months of his term. Any comments, any concerns? No comments? Alright, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, welcome aboard, Mister Allen, so appreciate that. And I guess just where in the next meeting, next, next Monday, we're looking at if we vote on next Monday is our budget meeting, it'll be next Monday. Grift on, okay?
Mister Mayor, we don't have an acceptance speech.
Would you like to come up?
I, I can, uh, no, I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to serve the community, um, I just had a great conversation, explained, um, just last week. Um, my kids grew up here, we had a good commu- uh, conversation about when you grow up in a community like this, but don't let the kids, you don't raise them below, raise this community. Uh, I did talk to the parish again, just on Friday, so, um, hopefully everything's out, the parish will sound, so at least. But again, uh, I appreciate the opportunity and look forward to working with everybody to make this better community.
Very good. Alright, thank you, thank you. Alright, now we've got the three oh four North Douglas up there. There we go, come on up.
Actually, last year you don't need.
That's okay.
You have to get them somewhere. Right, just need to go.
Alright, at the, uh, February tenth meeting this year, the city council gave the owners of three oh four North Douglas till the first meeting in September to complete the demolition and rebuild. Uh, the garage's been tore down since then. Uh, the add-ons still needs tore down and, uh, and then they need to do, uh, when the, once the add-ons tore down, they have to move, move the restroom inside. So that has to be done, yeah? And, uh, with that, the breaker box is located on the outside wall, so we need to, or they need to pay special attention how to keep electricity. And, uh, the only other thing I've seen is a drainage problem, it's got a hole and it's draining to the neighbor's foundation, so that should be addressed very quickly.
There's some property owner making progress, kind of a non-tractor here. It, it's probably a bit made from that standpoint. Um, well, I'll.
Yeah, and I'm here to address any questions, well.
Yeah, it's, the drainage does not be uncorrected, but sure that's.
I mean, once we get that structure, the remaining portion of the structure, um, out of there, which.
Here, do yourself, please.
Yes, I'm Shannon Law, I'm relying on, I'm the contract chosen for the job, um, and, uh, we do have, a majority of the dilapidated building has been removed at the end of March, I mean, we did get that done, it was probably the most dangerous portion, which is all said and done. Um, scheduling issues, the US letter, you know, and, uh, our, sorry, usual workloads, always an issue. Uh, quite honestly, I had an intent on having it done in the last two or three weeks, but the weather, it's just kind of unpreventable to deal. It was all said and done. Um, the remaining portion, um, is set to go, uh, we're pretty much sure we're in line to get that done as soon as I can get a clear path for about a, a five or six day window to get it knocked out of there. And that kind of concludes the portion of getting, you know, the contaminal part out of there. Um, so we can go back with the structure, um, new bathroom and build the arch, do you add on to the, to the building just a little bit if approved by the city as far as, uh, Frank goes. Um, and, uh, we intend on doing that and I promised the newspaper that we would get that done before, before it gets super cold, there's any plant issues, but once that substructure comes out, there's not even going to be an issue. We'll be moved at that point in place, so, I'm just asking for just to shore, I, I throw in the date of the December, uh, just to give a little bit of a window, but, um, we're ready to go.
Yeah.
Thank you both for being again.
Alright, so we need to make a motion to grant the extension or just let them do it? Okay, Mister Mayor, I make a motion to approve an extension for three oh four North Douglas for, uh, December thirty first, twenty twenty five, that's.
Yes. Alright, Counselor R has made a motion to approve the extension for the three oh four North Douglas, uh, repair work and Counselor uh, Hanson has seconded that, uh, it'll be done by December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Any issues? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, come on up here, yeah.
Thank you, counsel. I, the only concerns I have are that we currently do have uh, plumbing pipes water on the back of that building. And so I appreciate that there are delays, we know that that's what happens in construction, but if there were a way to tighten up that timeline and know that the back portion of that was going to be gone, so I don't have to be concerned about burst pipes, flooding, those sorts of issues, once we have freezing temperatures, that is our primary concern at this time, so I understand they need more time, but uh, if they need it to the end of the year to finish all their building, that's wonderful, but I really would love to see the demolition part happen sooner rather than later, just because I'm deeply concerned about the, the flooding and broken pipes and that there will be some unintended issues that come off and I, there's not much clarity on if I, I being responsible for that or if the building owner themselves will be responsible because the delays have been on them, not on us, so I just feel like speed would be a little bit more helpful in this situation. We did have water coming in our back door just this morning, flooding into our building from the back area, so if that back area could be removed ASAP, it would just bring a lot of peace of mind so that my staff and I feel forward.
So, the contractor respond to that?
Absolutely.
She also got, she is the tenant, right?
I am the tenant, yes.
Okay. Have you talked to your landlord?
We have repeatedly made efforts and response has been really minimal, Mister Mock has assured me things will be done before it gets frozen. And, but he's kind of in an interesting position too, because he's not the owner and so, I mean, he and I are both in kind of tenuous places and so it's a little delicate.
Counsel, technically you deal with the landowner, I mean, you know, when you make a sighting of, of an issue, you deal we as a city deal with the landowner, you know, you know, uh, some land over here, but I know Mister Mock's there, he represents every house ever, so.
Do we have the vendor coming next week?
I don't know if you, if you have Mister Mock here, I'm, I'm assuming you represent the land.
Yeah, I'm in touch with Rick and Tina, um, uh, often and I understand Karen's concerns and, and, uh, and, and they're here to me, Karen, they surely are. We're just here to resolve an issue and it's all said and done, it's construction, things come up and we're, we're, we're at some of the issue, underlying issues and and the infrastructure that needs to be dealt with temporarily while we tear down the building. Uh, more addressed, we've been in the community and, uh, you know, we, we've moved on it, but to keep a good name and, and this right, it's all said and done. Make every effort to do that. And working with the owners and the newspaper at the same time, um, really, you know, one of the biggest concerns we have being there a little bit.
And that's not a concern for us, like, that's okay.
When we talk about that, it's for, we're asking you to do temporarily.
It's sorted out.
Okay, so. Uh, we'll move forward and get electricity.
We just need electricity.
Sure, yeah.
Thanks.
Uh, then I really intend on having that, this meeting, but this is really a fit up, I'm now lost at the fifteen days, seven, eight, uh, easily, you know, our typical schedule of a heavy tour. We're ready to go. Thank you.
Alright. Any input that anybody has outside of?
Do we need to reevaluate before December?
Yeah, the other thing would be to have a November one report card. They can put a great, any motion of that, that might be one of the possibilities, you know?
So there's a problem we can.
I'll be happy to report as soon as this down, you guys will be hearing very soon around as you're.
You can just contact me, that's all.
Absolutely.
And so we'll do, we're gonna amend the motion?
No, it's a new guy that's made suggestions, do you want to amend the motion?
No, I don't want to.
She knows that, you know.
Yeah, it's just up there. Yeah, alright, so.
I'll mess on you.
Okay, nobody, okay, so hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries, okay?
Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Um, next item is the National Opioid Settlement.
Yeah.
She's getting Ronnie. Oh, yeah, listen to the grant.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, get excited, I'm gonna.
Yeah.
Stay in an hour, come on up. So approval to apply for the grant to Smokey Hill Community Foundation for speakers and sounding boards for the rec center, come on up.
Yeah, just look at your title, it's approval to apply for the, for that grant. Um, remember that when it doesn't go out, you know, we, we was willing to make a small little donation, where is that, so? Just need you permission to do so.
Mister Mayor, I move to, sorry Tyler.
Go ahead.
I'm going to allow the Recreation Department to apply to the Smokey Hill Community Foundation for a grant to help make their speaker system and sounding boards at the Health and Recreation Center, sweetie.
I'll second that, alright. Counselor Hanson has made a motion to approve, uh, Ronnie to apply for the grant to Smokey Hill Community Foundation for speakers and sounding boards for the rec center and Counselor Renard has seconded that motion, any other questions for them?
To be clear, it's just speakers inside the building, right, not outside?
Correct, but they are gonna be, not the speakers, but the system will be portable, just for the fact if the, um, the extent, well, the, if they build a, the, uh, the barn or, you know, that, that's an option for the extension office to, uh, will to utilize that equipment as well.
Okay, anything else, anybody?
Sorry, I did what you had last.
Yeah.
We put the one for landscape, too.
Alright, anything else, alright, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Good luck, yeah, hopefully you get it. Hey, next item is the National Opioid Settlement.
We've had one of these a couple of weeks ago and can, we just got noticed that more money will be coming this way. Um, as I said, we have about twenty thousand, twenty thousand five hundred specifically in the opioid fund now and at some point in time we'll find a program due to maybe a school program or county health or something where I made it available, but uh, this basically, uh, motion to approve that we continue with the settlement and, um, city clerk, the, um, uh, signature authority, um, uh, participation on behalf of the city.
I would represent that we.
About music, I get that.
Oh. See, I move.
Yeah.
I move that the city will most worth approve, the National Opioid Settlement, uh, with the agencies identifying. That's it, is that it?
Yes, very good.
And authorize.
Well, I didn't want to say it, that's why.
And authorize what?
The lead plan.
The lead grant. Power and authorization to execute the participations and release form on behalf of the city of Earl'swood.
I'll second.
Alright, Counselor Moon has made a motion to approve the National Opioid Settlement and President of the Council of Coats has seconded that motion. Any concerns about this one? No more questions, alright, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, um, three ten West Third Street, the minimum housing violation.
Alright, the residence at three ten West Third Street hasn't had running water since November twelve twenty four. I had an informal meeting with the owner on a four fifteen point five, saying that she need get the water back on and clear violations. She didn't, and the thirty days I gave her, so Steve issued her a violation order on five one twenty five be corrected by six two twenty five. They took no corrective action and then on seven twenty five they, uh, they sold it to Sheriff's Auction. So Rocket Mortgage bought it back. But now they have other people living in there, so I, I did this, uh, because they have no water, they're, people are issued a bar and minimum housing standard. So they need to give out anything. And I sent notices to the owner, cause South Lawn won't take possession till nine p, they have to.
You get some proof, yeah.
Yeah. And I sent on the Rocket Mortgage lawyers and the lady that was floating there at the time, Heather Vaughn. So, they all had them since the last hearing, good on them.
So can this house be fixed up to, could somebody live in it again or it gonna be?
I haven't been inside, but I've had water sewerings over, you know, seven, eight months, so who knows what's gonna go on there. But I'm sure that's what Rocket Mortgage has come.
Yeah, yeah.
This is just, uh, you know, people have now because they're on the beach, our house is staying there. So.
So sorry, you also have an issue here where, you know, they're, they're hauling water in, so that means they're using sewer, sewer and of course, what sewer use is based on water use and it just don't count being vague right now, so this is another reason why because we have waters, we still choose to have it. Uh, we don't have other centers.
They also run over our meter pit and destroy it in the meantime.
Yeah.
So.
They were the ones that were digging, weren't they?
Yeah.
Okay, Mister Mayor, I move to declare three ten West Third Street unfit for occupancy and placarded as such until violations are corrected and authorized the mayor and city clerk to sign resolution number two zero two five dash three two.
I'll second.
Alright, Counselor Renard has made a motion to declare three ten West Third Street unfit for occupancy and placarded as such until violations are corrected and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign Resolution Number twenty twenty six, or is that five, twenty twenty five dash thirty two. President of the Council of Coats has seconded that motion. Any concerns with this? Okay.
Sir, sir, so this is a hearing, yeah, is any property up as the owner here?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, very good. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright. Okay, next item, police chief applicant review and selection process.
Uh, Mister Mayor, uh, we have a police chief, um, admin announced, admin announced, and, uh, we're submitting applications, I'm guessing we're fifteen to twenty right now, um, of course, when we do an application like that, we put it on close, they basically say, until, so the person's found, however, we did announce that uh, we will begin application review on September sixteen. Of course, this position here will be hired by the government body. Um, you know, and how do we let them receive, because we've never done this, kind of new, new territory to us here, um, you know, do we want to, you know, have a subcommittee, maybe two council members, uh, work with myself and others to narrow down and then bring a couple of candidates to the entire council, because that, that interview will be done in the same session. Um, or, you know, a little further than that, I mean, I think everybody goes, I've been in former's government, been a city manager in town, that form of government where the hiring was made solely by the city manager and, uh, we go through that process, that's. Um, you know, some communities have, you know, have committees of, of, uh, civilians, uh, people from town residents and on the committee, that's good and bad, the only problem I always worry about that is confidentiality issues because you know, we do the applicants, local applicants, some applicants further away, um, we do have some further away, but, uh, to today, we're in Oklahoma, but not real far away. But, um, so basically just need to get something in place, we keep moving forward with that, you know? Um, I know in the same position, we had two campers, the mayor, of course, you know, mayor made that appointment, but it's not be, will not be made in a hurry for, as of tomorrow, so, um, how do you let them receive?
The two of us wanna sit in on, and watch them over?
Sounds good, you mean, little committee?
I'd be up to that.
Anybody else?
I can't even debate.
Okay. You do?
Sounds great.
I can't speak.
Yeah.
As well, here. Everybody go with that?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
We made a motion, I just, I'll just move forward with it and, uh, will be adjusted, maybe in the next week and a half or so, and and start this very, one process, so there's all pretty, I gotta be mentioned here for that.
Definitely.
For, for.
Yeah, okay. Alright, sounds good.
Perfect.
Alright, so the next one is the request to adjust an excessive use of water bill due to underground.
Mister Mayor and council members, um, had, had a contact with eleven point six highway fourteen, they had larger than normal water use, thirty nine seven thousand gallons. Uh, underground leak, uh, could be seen, um, they did call, um, I believe on August the seventh that they had little freshman out there, we helped identify, they had a, a kind of outside hose bib or hydrants um, leak at the bottom apparently and they got off, they used a lot of water. Apparently they've had a problem that might also be the landowner. Uh, unfortunately, this meter is not a a, one of our AMI meters, uh, back, we did AMI, you have a box about sixty that we're, but then finally we found out, we're gonna figure out why, and that we we, we had five, six meters that didn't get done and and trust me, when I was in, in Judge Steve, we did a replacement tube and we had six hundred meters that's done. And it's basically the same percent, I mean, same, it's like uncanny. And, and the problem is, is I'm assuming it could help back because of cost, because I'm guessing you're gonna be talking like a thousand dollar per meter to make the changes in from it's to centers to whatever the case may be, so that's why, but then it looks, our focus is now. Um, this community does not have a present policy right now, the present to give any time forgiveness for, you know, went through the meter, went through the meter, it's your water. Some cities have that policy, some don't, I broke on with it, I put some samples that was leading in the back, I'm sure that do, I wouldn't say it's that normal, because of the council, they could not be here tonight, you know, their bill is excessive because it's quite a bit more water. I do think that here needs to go because if they're only using five to six thousand gallons per month now, I'm not sure if we're getting a good reading anyhow, so it's time to get that meter going too. But we just need to focus on how to get those there, get a plan in place and maybe do a couple, a month to begin there, you know? Um, it goes to some cost, but again, we're having more revenue now when we increase trades, doing the things that we need to do, again, giving, put all the, the blocks together, so uh, you know, bottom line is, I give a, various, this one here, of any sort, but, um, these are tough to deal with, but um, they asked, I was on the agenda and gave my thoughts.
It's been almost eight years for me and this isn't the first and won't be the last, and we've never kept the bill, I mean, we've done paying the plans, but we've never kept the bill, you know, we've never knocked any off since I've been here, I mean, it sucks, but it's still water that went through the meter.
So, so Alan, what was the payment margins that you remember doing?
Well, they would, they could just, instead of having to pay the whole, you know, we would do work with them so they could pay like.
And we do those all the time.
You know? So I don't know how much, but.
Yeah.
But we are, as long as I've been, we've never knocked anybody's down, if it went through, it's, it sucks, but you used it, you know, I mean, we've never had anything to knock them any off, that I know of.
And again, city to city.
Yeah.
But what you research, I was able to do on this, Mister Diggle, and I appreciate, you know, the catching uh, some examples of what other communities do by way of paying fifty percent. Most, most of my priorities was the cost is the, uh, left to the, uh, owner of the premises or whoever's using it, uh, and I researched Hoyston, uh, Sterling, uh, Johnson City, several places, uh, but I like the idea of the plan, I'm not real clear what that plan would be, but.
And we made the plans all the time.
Yeah.
They didn't do.
You know, where you wouldn't have to cough up the whole amount next month, you know? You know? Maybe then, you know, we now kind of, they got problems, maybe we put this on, get the new meter stuck.
And the meter, right, the meter would not change, the only thing we need to reduce is, you know, with the AMI meters, uh, of, just, so those meters are dead, are ridden by radio and actually they're read every hour. Um, the nice part of AMI is this, we can come in here, especially if somebody has a bill that's too big and they'll come in and they'll say, my bill, I could use that somewhere, well, here's what you do. You know, and I've actually sat down, people not here, but in my, my air position, I was in Judge City, sat down and says, you water at four o'clock in the morning. How do you know? I don't, give me a dozen four o'clock, you water on Mondays, Thursday and Fridays, whenever they came to make me. Um, you know, it's freaky, um, I'm not sure all the cap builds we have here yet that can we have where they use, where, where given alerts, I mean, I know in Judge City, they give, probably got more of a priority than it did here. But we had one where every day is the, you know, and the water mirrors came in and the computer said, hey, you got, you may have problems at least four edges, so we go up and say, you've got a problem. Doesn't change anything and even though we got, we should, we need to focus on replacing those. Doesn't change anything, and even though we got, we should, we need to focus and replace those meters. Water still went through there and five years ago, they went through air wise, I mean, you didn't have those, so again, nothing's really changed there, so. Um, it's just, it's just, I mean. The AMI meters are wonderful, I love them, um. But unfortunately, you always had a few at the end, and again, when I saw sixty here, they said we have sixty, I said I had six hundred, so. It's about six percent, whatever the reason is, and so. It's all candid, here, everything I do is one tenth of what I did. A year and a half ago, so. Numbers are almost identical, so.
So I think what I'm hearing is not setting a precedent, again. We've never done it, uh, working with them, right?
Payments, yeah.
Payments. Your research. Rob rates that. All right, so are we ready to make a decision here or?
I don't lose to make any kind of motion at all, I mean, you know, you're not gonna grant, unless you wanna grant an exemption. An exemption, then then just leave it go.
Yeah. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, and you have no desire for me trying to do a policy then, do. An ordinance for the future. Now, I'm okay to take it up, I just.
I'm not opposed to that.
Okay.
So I think I'm in minority, well, no, I don't. I I mean, means is they don't have, I mean, not that saying it's gonna change, but being that they don't have an AMI meter. Right. You know, like we have, I mean, Angela is really good about. She notices and she'll call you and be like, hey, I noticed that, you know. They didn't have that accountability, but somebody calls them up and said, hey, we noticed you're using this amount of water. Don't, I mean, not that we're probably gonna change anything, but it might not hurt to have. I'm with Justin, whatever, everybody else wants.
I could throw some policies that are just view of the future, if you want me to, I'm, that's not hard to do.
Mr. Dinko, I, if I found the right ordinance. It looked like it was, uh, made or. Created in two thousand. Uh, all users shall keep their own service pipes, stop, hop, and at rest. And could repair and protect it from freezing at their own expense and shall prevent all unnecessary waste of water. And it is expressly stipulated that no plane shall be made against the city by reason of breaking. Or leaking of any service cause or service pipe. And and I guess all I'm saying is this is twenty five years old. Could a new policy be updated?
It can't be, you know, bottom line is, the city has no life. For the best of them, now, the question is, is underground leaks are what they are. And, you know, it ain't like a city leak, but we've had city leaks that may go for days before we find them. Until they surface. Um, you know, luckily, we deal with a little more pressure and flow and everything else that's ever served, but. I'm sure we've had things over the years that we didn't find them. The day they came out of the ground was necessarily the day it started, because they may not came up yet. Um, it's just the way life is, you know. And again, you know, what, you know, there's no perfect policy, as I said, I shared the different ones and. And they're all, and they're all good, it's whatever the community wants. And what the government body wants, and then they're all fine, um, you know, they're tough, um.
Well, I guess the thing, the thing that I look at is, okay, I mean, you start doing that. Everybody here's gonna be paying for their leaks. But. Does that water, right, somebody, work, somebody's paying for it, whether the person that had the meter or the whole town, so. If you open that can, you know, I'm just saying.
It's just the first one.
It is, it definitely is, yeah.
So, but it wouldn't hurt to have them draw a. Didn't dislike it. You know.
We can play with down the road, like explicitly talk about, I mean, you know. Again, it's probably maybe good to have a discussion, but you know.
Right.
Man, I'd say getting these meters changed out and get them all AMI would be a good thing.
And like I said, we're getting funny, we'll, we'll focus on.
That might help a lot of them too, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't know they weren't all changed either.
I didn't either.
But that was a whole fiasco which is, uh.
And my thinking was, um, I'm going in and out of my house all the time. Uh, but by the time I notice, uh, water seeping at the ground level. It's been leaking for eight months and and I, and I just didn't know.
I know. It may be longer than that.
Yes.
It could.
Remember that one we never found, that over here on.
Oh, yeah.
Down the street here.
Yes.
Trisha Evans, remember, we never did find, I mean, she was using, but we never, they never.
Not the sound, we're also. Leaky faucets, leaking.
They couldn't find anything, though, like they, she had plumbers in there, we had city over there, they never could find where it was at.
I don't think that was the guy who's usage, so.
Mine did.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, uses happen, people leave stuff on and and from toilets to sinks to whatever. And trust me, I guess we don't know, it's like big stories.
So so what we're gonna do is. Mr. Dinko, you're gonna draw up some policies just.
Just just have a discussion down the road and book it in months of two.
We do. Very good. All right, so on to the next item, ordinance number thirty one seventy seven dissolving a community improvement district. And terminating a community improvement district sales tax.
Mr. Mayor and council members, uh, this is actually the fun one here because success. Uh, you know, back in before twenty fifteen, you did a transportation district. Up in that portion, far portion of town. And then it got turned into a community improvement district in twenty fifteen. You had the one percent extra sales tax there, the bonds have now been paid off, the sales tax needs to stop. So, uh, we should adopt, Temple County is up with Gilmore Bell, ordinance number thirty one seventy seven, which discontinues the district. As of December thirty first, we could stop it today, except the state of Kansas. Stop the sales tax, we have to notify them. Before the the preceding order, so in other words, if to to put it on December. December thirty one, January. You have to give notification to, uh, Kansas Department of Resources, um, prior to October one. And so this this motion will be, this will be, um. Uh, put in the paper next week, and then we'll go ahead and submit it to cop, to, uh, revenue. And then revenue, um. In November, December, they'll put the notes out to all the, uh, businesses up there that as of January one, you you lowered one percent sales tax there. And so the entire town will be eight point seven five rather than nine seventy five in that district there. There is somebody coming in yet for the end of the year. We will bring to you and Kevin did. Your state statute, and basically we can use for any general fund use, but I think since it was raised in the district, Kevin agrees with me. That maybe, and I haven't had a chance to talk to staff, when Troy gets back, and maybe it's just a street project. Improvements with curb resource up in, up in that neighborhood, but we'll bring those to you, but, um, to you some of those, because. It's bringing in a little over ten thousand dollars a month. Uh, so we have forty, fifty thousand dollars that, you know, could be used that, but maybe some just to to fix up. At the same time, of course, we're gonna be doing the, um, intersection, um, at council in one fifth of six, was right in that same area. That maybe we wait for that's done, because there's some tie in that we may want to do, it'd be an enhancement, so we will keep this on the radar, uh. But, uh, extra fifty thousand, we have their guarantee, we may want to, there may be a tie in because of the foreign dirt, it's like. Boy, they did that, and how about we do this, you know, so. We'll keep that in front of you, but we do need a motion to adopt the ordinance. To discontinue this, um, CID district, community improvement district, and discontinue the sales tax as of December thirty one of this year. Or January one, basically, yeah, I'll do this.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number three one seven seven dissolving a community development district. And terminate a community development district sales tax.
I would second that.
All right, Councilor Nard moves to adopt the ordinance number three one seven seven dissolving a community development district. And terminating community del- development district sales tax. Councilor Moon has seconded that. Any debate or discussion regarding this?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Do we have a, a recall, uh, note on this, please?
Sure.
So dissolve the bond stuff for the.
All right.
And to clarify that this is the end of the year, right?
Be January, yeah, January, yeah, December thirty first. So the sales tax will stay in place till then, those extra funds. Like I said, we didn't bring specific project, we can use for a general fund, but I do believe, I think it's just one of those days, Kim and I talked. Then it was raised there, it was there, so let's focus something, and again. With the council project happening this next year, it may make sense when they get that going, like, you know, they have to put it somewhere, is it then? Maybe we can do some enhancement there, don't know, we just haven't had a chance to talk about it yet. Uh, this kind of just came up here, we discovered, maybe we do this now, so. Nice bonding was made last week, so. Bond been retired.
All right. Hearing no other comments or any concerns? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
They said wrong.
All right, all right, Garcia.
Aye.
Councilor Moon.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries, here we go.
Perfect.
All right, uh, on to the meeting dates.
Mr. Mayor, first, we moved budget meeting for next week, because the publication all done. Do you wanna have a meeting, do you just want to September twenty second meeting to the fifteenth? Forget the second meeting is about to happen next week, or you just want to do budget next week, have a meeting on the twenty second? I know Councilor President's gonna be gone, so I said she can zoom in. I don't care, um, but if you wanna have, just move to the fifty, you can. At the same time, if you wanna discuss having a meeting on December twenty second, last year I know fell on December twenty third, to January, December meeting, your second one. You waive that meeting, you wanna waive it this year. You know, you probably maybe do the one motion if you want to, uh, if that's what you wanna do, if you wanna have two meetings, one next week, one the following week, cool with that. It's your choice.
Can we get it all done in one meeting?
Yes.
Oh, can't, I'd say we do one.
Me too.
I mean, if we can do.
And I think that worked out really well, not having the second meeting in December, but being available if they need us to have a meeting, best way.
But you're gonna have to, you know, and so so all that will happen is the first meeting in December, that'd be on the eighth, I believe. You know, the eighth, uh, would basically be the last meeting of this council, because the following meeting, uh, will open the meeting with the new council. Whoever, like the mayor, whoever, you know, and move forward in that point there.
But but so go to that, go to that January twelfth meeting just real quick, because we, we don't talk about it a lot, from what I remember. It's real quick, I'm up here for just a short.
No, you're, I mean. No, uh, the mayor takes over at the beginning of the meeting.
On the twelfth, I do the whole meeting.
No, mayor, on January twelfth, the new mayor. Opens the meeting. There is no, you know, stipulation, some people always said a new business, I don't, I disagree, and I think people would say.
They become mayor that day.
On January, you know, January. I said, and then, so begin before January twelfth meeting, just like we did last meeting, and like we will next meeting, two minutes before the meeting will do. Swear in of the new mayor, uh, and the council, the two elected council members. Um, will all get sworn in that night. You open the meeting.
Gotcha.
So so in essence, the last meeting, uh, would be there, if you, if you decide to wait until December twenty second meeting.
I was like, it's good.
Yeah.
So that would be my ask me.
Ask mayor.
Correct, okay.
There, well, that's, well, that's a special media is needed.
Right.
Hope we don't have to have one.
And he swears in or she swears then.
The duties of the mayor stay until, the duties of the council stay until, if people are sworn in on the twelfth.
I like it. Pretty happy with that?
You need a motion to, I'm gonna do this, so. Basically, we need a motion to, um, hold the September twenty second meeting, go September fifteenth in coordination with the budget meeting. And to waive the second meeting in December, December twenty second. That's what you wanna do.
Mr. Mayor, I move to move the September twenty second meeting. Being conjunction with the September fifteenth budget hearing and. Chairman, only hold one meeting in December, I'm sorry, does that work, when you say no meeting?
That's cool, you're good, yeah.
That's cool, I'm good. All second.
All right, President of the council coats has made a motion to. Move the September twenty second meeting to September fifteenth, I'm sorry, um. That is correct, to September fifteenth, and to, um. Do away with the second, uh, council meeting, the Monday, December twenty second council meeting, and Councilor Hanson has seconded that motion. Any debate, any concerns? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, all right, very good. So we're moving on to department heads, um. David, did you have anything?
We, uh. I just skipped him, sorry. Dave, the fault. Here, um, we had another well. We, uh, got, we, we got the. Valve put in to shut it off, so we don't leak it anymore. And, uh. But, uh, we'll have to get some motors and some, it's cleaned it out again. Some of that. Uh, this is gonna handle whatever got. Even after we got the clean. We'll have to talk about that later sometime.
Brian and I are talking, I talked to Brian this morning already, so, um. Brian is is moving forward with. Probably the two wells, we talked about the two, I know. Four, I mean.
Four and six.
Four and six, I can't remember the numbers on it, we were tight, we talked about last time, so moving forward to that. And then, so we're gonna fin- financing that replacement, those two wells, two in seven.
Two and seven. Yeah. That's all.
Thank you, appreciate that, and. All right, Ralph, did you have anything?
Did have one quick thing. Fastly to answer, uh, questions that you may have regarding some stuff that I'm not even sure they answered, um. News went out today that there had been mutual aid swiftwater teams dispatched to Elwood County. Um, and, uh, so I got calls early on today with emergency management, um. I didn't know anything, they didn't know anything, the sheriff's office didn't know anything, we did not have any swiftwater rescues. After several phone calls and conversations with emergency management. And why it came through them, we still don't know, but apparently the fire marshal's office. Um, called out and dispatched great men and garden cities into the Russell and Sling County areas because of the, of the rains. Um, so. If you hear scuttlebutt that there was mutual aid swiftwater rescue team who came in here, there was not. Um, the only thing we were able to figure out is they they thought they were pre-stating because there were reports of over seven inches of rain in some locations. So, uh, we did not have swiftwater rescue event, um, motive, we call in assistance on that, so if you get asked that. Uh, that's really, and why it came through the fire marshal's office, that emergency management. I do not know, neither does emergency management, so other than that, unless you have any questions for me, I don't really have anything.
Very good, thank you. Uh, let's see, no police representation here, um, Ronnie, did you have anything?
I don't have enough.
Okay. Um, got anybody else back there? That is, um, devil, James, yeah, hold on.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know the old home, Chevrolet building, first Lincoln. The sketch would be tore down, probably end of this month. Whether you're ready to sell, uh, you were that.
That's the one behind the library.
Yes, bought to the south, yeah. So, it's in the works to get it done.
I kind of thought that was gonna turn into an, into a tennis court. With, not the case.
No. Not much left there for tennis court. Appreciate it, that's all I have.
Thank you, yeah, very good. Okay, uh, city attorney, do you have anything?
I have a little things, Mayor. Just a couple notes from your meeting. Or, uh, I hope there is. A lot of cities are partnering with counties on this, and that way you can leverage your funds, I've seen other places, so. And as that pools off, uh, you might just see what they're doing with their money and leverage it better. And I made it know on the whole issue of water running through. Uh, House Member Reddard's right, we've always, the cities have always just made everyone pay, I made it know if. If you go with a policy, you have to go with a written policy, because. Uh, we never would be in a position where you have to decide who's deserving of that. And the other thing I noted was, it's awesome that also with Kansas, our city staff will call people if they see meter usage. That is a, that that is an extra, that is not our job to let people know, that's, it's important to policy to let you know. We try and help that way, but it's not our job to identify that. And shed hit it out, but most importantly, the thing I need to tell you guys about. There's a letter we got from the State Attorney General, Kansas. It's in response to those of you who are on council and for our new members. Um, to a complaint that was filed back in February by Mayor Finnegan. This relates to an email chain where Mayor Finnegan. This relates to an email chain where Mayor Finnegan emailed the city council members, and then they responded to it. This is back when there was a discussion about parking lot across the street. The attorney general's office, and I should note that, and what happened there was, uh, Mayor Finnegan emailed, a couple council members responded, and Dustin Stamblach, to his great credit, told him, stop doing this, this is probably a violation of the meetings act. Uh, and Mayor Finnegan, uh, probably complained with the attorney general's office. They agreed with what Dustin Stamblach said at the time, and she said it was a technical violation. They did not find the city, um, you may have seen the news, they recently found a different city for a worse violation. So they did say, hey, don't do this, it's technical violation, I've got the letter. We were gonna do training on coma back in February, and it snowed, we'll be down on our schedule. So we need to schedule that training, um, I will do that with you guys, if you want me to, or you can hire somebody else to do it. Um, if you wanna schedule with me, I did, we just need to figure out when we do it, we could do it. I could do it on a Tuesday night, I could do it on a Wednesday night, I could do it on a Saturday morning. Takes about an hour to go over it, and then what I would do is, uh, and it kinda works out, because we have two council members that have never gone through that. And then after the elections between November and January, all round up, any new people coming on board that didn't make that training, I'll train them.
So it was a coma violation, just a technical coma violation?
It was a coma violation, I said, because email correspondence, reply all outside of the meeting, because the AG's office says, no, you can't do those things. So that's why when staff and Allen and I email the whole council, we do a blind carbon copy, so that you all get information at the same time. And we don't do that a lot, sometimes the sudden emergency will happen, well, when everyone didn't know what's going on, we use a blind carbon copy, so if somebody accidentally, as many people did, replies all, so just reply, it only goes back to the person who sent. But in this situation, it wasn't using blind carbon copies, so they were, they replied, um, and it, there might have been confusion as to whether or not they were replying all, but they replied all, and so it went back to everybody, we can't do that.
And we won't, we won't, if reply all, to our personal mails, we get, you know, you've all, we've all done it, so.
I complain when other people do it to me, and then everyone's all, I do it to someone else, and so.
We all do it, um, you know, and I, I, I agree with, uh, Patrick, because if the administrator got right along with that time, you know, the email should never have been sent, it was, it, since happens, I think from a standpoint, I mean, it's against, I mean, um, did the council do the right thing to the next meeting, yes, you talked about the issue, um, you know? I think it's always good to have trainings, and, you know, we keepers by above, um, yes, it's violation. Going from the four, but it's not, you know, um, you know, and again, it was an issue. I've had one, I had one that I was involved with, that we actually had to prove that we did training. Um, yeah, so, and I still argue that we violated the law, I mean, the attorney general still arguing that one, I still think I'm right too. And, um, but that was a long different situation there, but, but, um, you know.
I don't know if you guys wanna decide on the schedule tonight, or if we, we should get it on schedule before too long, then.
We gotta swear, uh, councilor Allen to.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll pick him up if he, there's, well, come on, well, it's good training, honestly, it's good training. I had a short conversation with council member Moon about it, and a little awesome slides and stuff, and try not to make it too painful, I just don't know, you guys, I just, maybe decide next meeting, get the balance, say, do you wanna do it in the evening sometime, I know, fall, I'm busy, we're all busy, if you just carve out an hour, we do it, yes.
Hey, I want the painful version.
Okay, yeah, I will, I know, you guys, probably painful.
It, it's very sticky. I'm, I'm wondering how about get, get to know Dorothy, get to know Jessica, get.
Get to know people, it's what you, I mean, basic bottom line is, you do not talk about any city business outside of this room, basically, that's the first rule. If you go to ballgames, let's, you can go to tennis match, but you can do anything with them, you can have lunch with them, just don't talk about city business. And this case here was the email, nobody, in my mind, you know, this is one of those, it's probably been done by a thousand other councils, school boards, county commissioner stated Kansas, where somebody accidentally gave it by a wall, um, you know, um, yeah, it was a transaction thing that, that everybody admitted right away, the city administrator jumped on them right away. Um, everything was handled perfectly, in my mind, and looking from the side here, and I've been this long time, and, and, um, you know, it happens, uh, you know, the one I was, 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 we had an executive session that we thought was called properly, but they, but somebody was upset, because we actually had a session on, at the end of the show, no progress, we had one of those last meeting here, and they argued that it wasn't, that we weren't specific enough. And as you know, I wasn't fairly specific in, in mind, you know, as you know, when I make the motions for executive sessions, I have to put the state statute number better, and I go like, eh, I don't have to, but, but we're doing it now.
I've started doing that for, I said, right?
Yeah.
When I started, I didn't do that, I do it now, and then, uh, yeah, there's a city our size that actually got an AG's opinion, because they were doing something drawn, so it's good to look for other reasons. Just let me know soon when we wanna get together, I think, I just like to get that scheduled, we've got new members, so it's good to do that, before, and it goes across, it will just cross the South West, they said.
Could it be a virtual training?
Yeah, problem, I mean, I think so, if you want, if you wanna attend by Zoom, they could.
The only reason, we have to allow the training to be, to the.
Well, yeah, yeah, it, the, the training also has to be open.
Yeah.
But if we had one or more members that, we could figure that out, if, if somebody will, you know?
Look, but.
I, I would probably, I would probably try to be here physically, so that we wouldn't make everyone do it on Zoom, and then if we, if we hadn't few members on Zoomed in, I think you'd be okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll put some dates out, yeah, for next meeting, if I could.
Would, would, would that be a time or an opportunity to address having occurring matters?
Well, we could, I know you mentioned that too, too, you know, uh, we could, I, I, I did a little bit of research and started working, or, well, I, I found another city that had a good profession, so.
Okay.
And we could talk about, yeah, actually, though, I think the code of ethics discussion, uh, would be more appropriate for a regular agenda meeting. And I, and I think what the procedure Alan usually uses is you put it on the agenda once to discuss, and then possibly with the revisions or not.
Seven years, I, I have one good example of that, which was.
Probably have it by everyone, so. All right, but, would you like that, I guess, that's up to the mayor, you could ask the mayor to put that on the agenda for next meeting.
Oh, I can, yeah. Um, you know, I know, it's about code of ethics, um, the problem code of ethics is, is you as a governing body, Patrick, no longer, you as a governing body member here are individual, individuals, okay? What one council member does on their own or anything else, really, you can't do much about it, even if they do something against the code of ethics, or they make, make an advisement of some sort, they're still council members, the only way you can move, remove council members are by resignation, they leave said, such city, they move out of town, they don't wanna live in town, as we had example here, and perhaps, over east of Conoplas, where the guy just doesn't live there anymore, so he didn't have, if he didn't resign, regardless, he's still gone. Um, of course, if they die, or they, you know, of course, there's an ouster, there's recall, uh, recalls will happen very often, the ousters are even less than.
Yeah, I, you know, Alan's right, like, the code of ethics isn't binding in that you can't violate it, and you can't remove somebody. It's more of a tool of like, hey, these are what we expect from people, I, I see pros and cons of them. When I do my, my onboard training, which I'll kinda do a version of, my coma training that I do now, it has some extra stuff. One of it's about your substantial interest statement, it says you have to file when you run for office, and I kinda talk about how important it is to get it on there, which kinda leads into code of ethics, because you're declaring a substantial interest in something, then you shouldn't vote on that thing, because you have a conflict of interest, I don't know. Uh, I have never really worked with a place that had a real, that tried to implement a code of ethics, it means it's an interesting concept, so, I think, which you guys, yeah, will discuss a next meeting or not, it's, I'll give those, those, that's all I have, you know?
You want to, I'll, I'll jump next to you.
I would.
Yeah.
You need, maybe, you.
So the October meeting?
Yeah, maybe, because I, somehow I get all very funny.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, nothing else, okay, City what? Nothing, okay. All right, Alan, City Minister.
David's still my thunder, I was gonna talk about his water issues, but, take care, no problem there. Lot of rain today, neighbors in the east and north, there's been lots of rains. Um, depends on where you test that, down the roof floor area and all those, that have, you know, ten plus inches of rain, so, where it turns out well for them, so. I would stay there, but I went to Grand River March, and thank God they got the marching done before it rained hard, and so, uh, you know, I'm, there's only half. Thank you.
Very good, City Council Tyler, I don't have anything, all right, President of Council Coats.
Yeah, for Alan, um, we had fair association meeting last week, so I was curious, like, where we are with that show arena? Have you guys figured out, like, purchase price for that little shed, and what's that look like?
I had to discuss with, um, Scotts, and I think we'll discuss more, you know?
We're still discussing, basically?
We just need to, they may begin with me more, I mean, I've been taught, and I think earlier I have taught, and, and things with that during the fair, and, so, yeah. And everything ready to talk, I'm ready to go, so, you know, we're up here.
All right, Council Moon?
I'm just appreciative of the, the openness to talk about, um, the code of ethics, because I think it, it just adds another layer of attention concentration on your position as a council member, uh, that you need to be attentive to. And I know that we're all people, and, you know, Alan, do you play tennis? No, not, not Alan, Tyler, sorry.
Not, not anymore. It's good, maybe not.
So, so you and I going to a tennis thing may not, it may not occur.
Probably not. I don't think it'd be very fun, but, maybe if my kids did it, it would be fun.
So, anything, I, I'm just real pro, uh, code of ethics, and that may be, uh, Mr. Diggle, from my military background.
Very good, anything else, Mr.?
No, I do, okay.
Dawson, you have anything? All right, that leaves me, I'd like to end this meeting on a very solid note, uh, I gotta say, I respectfully just disagree with what Patrick and Alan just said, I don't think that's completely the entire story, but let's leave it at that, okay? I think we have a new council, let's, let's move forward in a very positive way. I appreciate the attorney general's office, I don't think I've ever seen something so thoroughly done, uh, I read it multiple times, and I thought they really looked at it. They could not go further, I wanted them to go much further, they don't have the authority to go further than just say, this is a technical violation, that's all we can do legally, is this, and so we gotta be happy with that, so. Very happy and appreciative of, of the office and the work that they did. Um, heading to Washington DC tomorrow to, uh, for the final session of the leadership Kansas Farm Bureau program that I've been a part of. So I look forward to kinda meeting some different people and seeing what we can get into there, so. Uh, look forward to that, and then kinda look forward to the election coming up, that's exciting, seeing what happens there. And this is gonna be a good, it's gonna be a great end of the year, I appreciate, um, Councilor Allen for, soon to be Councilor Allen, for accepting the appointment, and uh, Councilor Moon has been awesome so far, uh, he's read the entire Kansas state constitution.
Really great.
So, yeah, he's done, so, but anyway, with that said, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I'm to adjourn the meeting at six thirty-three. I can.
All right, Council President, Council Coats has made a motion to adjourn the meeting, and Councilor Hanson has seconded that motion, hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, motion carries, the meeting is adjourned.